Congress is back in session. I hereby call the sixteenth day of the fourth regular session of the Twenty-third Congress to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abel Alfonso.
Castle Lilia Mayne.
Senator Arredoz. Senator Asher. Senator Christian. Senator Figuer. Senator Kolland. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Marar. Senator Nemea. Vice Speaker Romolo. Senator Segura.
Yes, good morning.
Senator Orosomal. Speaker Moses.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, eleven members are present.
With that, Congress has quorum to transact business. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on item number four, reading of the Journal.
Floor Leader Lawrence. It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the Journal. Discussion? Any objections to the said motion? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on item number five, Presidential Communications. We have two of them, and they are numbers twenty-three dash three thirty to number twenty-three dash three three one.
Thank you. Assign those. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on item number six, F.S.M. Supreme Court Communications. None, Mr. Speaker. Member Communications for item seven, none also, Mr. Speaker. Departmental Communications for item eight, none, Mr. Speaker. Item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker. Item ten, State Communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item eleven, State Supreme Court Communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item twelve, Municipal or Town Communications, we also do not have any, Mr. Speaker. Item thirteen, Foreign Government Communications, none. And item fourteen, Venezuelan Communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For item fifteen, please disregard the waiting list, number twenty-three dash twenty-four.
Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on item number sixteen, Special Committee Reports. As of now, we do not have any, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seventeen, For Assignment Measures and Communications, please refer to referral sheet number twenty-three dash fifty-three.
Members, chairs, please take note. Next item.
Item eighteen, Unfinished Business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item nineteen, Bill calendar. The first bill under the Bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-two for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-two is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty-nine-five, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash one seventy-three, twenty-one dash forty-seven, twenty-one dash seventy-two, twenty-one dash eighty-five, twenty-one dash one twenty-five, twenty-one dash one fifty-one, and twenty-two dash one forty-three by amending section six thereof to extend the last state of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people in each of the states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress pass on Congress Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-two on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-two. Discussion? Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a floor amendment that was offered to C.B. Number twenty dash one forty-two, a copy of which has been read and distributed to members. Because of its length, I wish to request to suspend the reading of the floor amendment, so moved. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-two, offered by Chairman Asher, be adopted. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Speaker. I move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our actions on the offered floor amendment.
It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules that may impede our action, especially the rule prohibiting substantive amendments on second reading. Discussion? Any objections? If none, we will vote on the suspension of the rules. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We are now on the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-two, offered by Chairman Asher. Discussion?
Question.
If no objection, discussion is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have C.B. twenty-three, one forty-two, C.D. one. Any further discussion? If none, and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on C.B. Number twenty-three dash forty-two, C.D. one, for second reading by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Orosomal. For the State of Yap, Chairman Orosomal. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-two, C.D. one. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Speaker.
Chairman Orosomal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I wish for the record to reflect that on all the extension of last date, I would respectfully request the Chairman of Ways and Means to cast a vote for Yap.
No objection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're on Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-three for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-three is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash one twenty-five, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash one thirty-five, twenty dash one forty-six, twenty dash one fifty-seven, twenty dash one seventy-nine, twenty dash one eighty-nine, twenty-one dash oh-six, twenty-one dash forty, twenty-one dash fifty-nine, twenty-one dash eighty-nine, twenty-one dash ninety-six, twenty-one dash one forty-one, twenty-one dash one fifty-five, twenty-one dash two-one-seven, twenty-one dash two-thirty, twenty-one dash two-thirty-nine, twenty-two dash twenty, twenty-two dash seventy, twenty-two dash eighty-eight, twenty-two dash ninety-five, twenty-two dash one forty-four, twenty-two dash two-oh-one, and twenty-three dash fifty-one by amending section six thereof to extend the last state of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of the states of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress pass Congress Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-three on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-three. Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I offer the floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty dash one forty-three. Reading copy has been distributed to parties, and because of its length, I also ask that it's dispensed, the reading of the floor amendment, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-three, offered by Chairman Asher, be adopted. Please note that the rules are still suspended, and with its length, we will dispense with its reading. Discussion on the offered floor amendment.
Question.
If no further discussion, no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on second reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-three by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-three, C.D. one. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the Bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-four for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash one forty-one, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash one forty-five, twenty dash one sixty-three, twenty dash one sixty-four, twenty dash one ninety, twenty-one dash oh-five, twenty-one dash thirty-three, twenty-one dash forty-eight, twenty-one dash sixty-seven, twenty-one dash ninety-one, twenty-one dash one eighty-two, twenty-one dash one ninety-three, twenty-two dash thirty-four, twenty-two dash sixty-nine, twenty-two dash seventy-seven, twenty-two dash one sixty, twenty-two dash one seventy-seven, twenty-three dash oh-four, twenty-three dash twenty, and twenty-three dash twenty-seven by amending section six thereof to extend the last state of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other projects and programs in each in the states of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four. Discussion? Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I offer the floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty dash one forty-four. A copy has been reduced into writing and distributed to members. Because of its length, I therefore request that we dispense with the reading of the floor amendment, so moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four be adopted, offered by Chairman Asher, and I believe that's the new version. So, discussion on the offered floor amendment.
Speaker.
Chairman Orosomal.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just a very one-second recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion on the offered floor amendment by Chairman Asher to C.B. twenty-three dash one forty-four. Any further discussion on the offered floor amendment? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment offered by Chairman Asher. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four offered by Chairman Asher has been adopted. We now have C.D. one. Any further discussion on C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on second reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four, C.D. one, by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
Thank you. With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-four, C.D. one. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the Bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-five for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-five is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash one fifty-five, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty dash one seventy-seven, twenty dash one eighty-eight, twenty-one dash one, twenty-one dash sixty-one, twenty-one dash eighty-eight, twenty-one dash one nineteen, twenty-one dash one fifty, twenty-two dash oh-eight, twenty-two dash forty-three, twenty-two dash one nineteen, and twenty-three dash fifty-three by amending section six thereof for the purpose of extending the last state of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk states, and for other purposes.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-five. Discussion? Any discussion? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will now vote on second and final reading to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-five by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-five. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-six for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-six is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty-one dash forty-three, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty-one dash fifty-four, twenty-one dash seventy-one, twenty-one dash eighty-two, twenty-one dash one oh-three, twenty-one dash one oh-seven, twenty-one dash one fifty-eight, twenty-one dash one eighty-six, twenty-one dash two thirty-five, twenty-two dash sixteen, twenty-two dash fifty, twenty-two dash sixty-eight, twenty-two dash one twenty-three, twenty-two dash one forty-nine, and twenty-two dash one ninety-two by amending section six thereof to extend the last state of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk states, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-six. Discussion? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will now vote on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-six by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-six. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-seven for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-seven is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty-one dash eighty, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty-one dash ninety-nine, twenty-one dash one ten, twenty-one dash one forty-three, twenty-one dash one eighty-one, twenty-one dash one eighty-eight, twenty-one dash two fourteen, twenty-one dash two forty-two, twenty-two dash nineteen, twenty-two dash thirty-eight, twenty-two dash fifty-six, twenty-two dash ninety-nine, twenty-two dash one oh-seven, twenty-two dash one oh-eight, twenty-two dash one forty-two, twenty-two dash one ninety-nine, and twenty-three dash twelve by amending section six thereof to extend the last state of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk states, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-seven. Discussion? Any discussion? If none and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-seven by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-seven on second and final reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the Bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-eight for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-eight is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty-one dash one fifty-seven, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty-one dash one seventy-nine, twenty-one dash two-one-six, twenty-two dash seventeen, twenty-two dash thirty-five, twenty-two dash forty-four, twenty-two dash one eighteen, and twenty-three dash twenty-two by amending section six thereof for the purpose of extending the last state of certain, of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk states, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-eight. If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-eight by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-eight. Next bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty-one dash two-oh-one, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty-one dash two-one-nine, twenty-one dash two-two-three, twenty-one dash two-twenty-nine, twenty-one dash two-forty-one, twenty-two dash twenty-eight, twenty-two dash thirty-one, twenty-two dash fifty-one, twenty-two dash sixty-seven, twenty-two dash ninety-seven, twenty-two dash one-oh-four, twenty-three dash twenty-one, and twenty-three dash fifty-eight by amending section six thereof for the purpose of extending the last state of funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk states, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the said bill on second and final reading.
Third. It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine. Discussion? Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Speaker. I also have offered the floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty dash one forty-nine. Reading copy has been distributed to members. Because of its length, I seek to dispense the reading of the floor amendments, so moved.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine be adopted, offered by Chairman Asher. Discussion?
Question.
If no objection, no further discussion, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine offered by Chairman Asher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine offered by Chairman Asher has been adopted. We now have C.D. one. Next discussion on the C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine, C.D. one. Any discussion? If none and no objection, debate is closed. We will now vote on C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine on second and final reading, C.D. one, by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura.
Yes.
For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one forty-nine, C.D. one. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the Bill calendar now is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one fifty for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty is a bill for an act to amend Public Law Number twenty-two dash eighty-nine, amended by Public Law Number twenty-two dash one sixty-seven by amending section two thereof to extend the last state of funds previously appropriated therein to fund priority infrastructure projects for the people of Yap State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
I move for the passes of the said bill on second and final reading. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading, chief by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one is a bill for an act to amend Public Law Number twenty-two dash one fifty-seven, amended by Public Laws Numbers twenty-two dash one seventy-nine and twenty-two dash two-oh-five by amending section six thereof to extend the last state of fund previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Ponpe, and Chuk states, and for other purposes.
Speaker.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one. Discussion? Chairman Asher.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one. The reading copy has been distributed to members. Because of its length, I seek to dispense the reading of the floor amendment again, so I, so moved.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one be adopted, offered by Chairman Asher. Any discussion on the offered floor amendment? If none and no objection, we'll vote on the offered floor amendment. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered floor amendment to C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one has now been adopted. We have C.D. one. Any further discussion on the said bill? As amended? If none and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one, C.D. one, by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the State of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the State of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the State of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the State of Yap, Chairman Figuer.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-one, C.D. one. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the Bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number twenty-three dash one fifty-six for second and final reading. C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-six is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number nineteen dash thirty-two, amended by Public Laws Numbers nineteen dash forty-five, nineteen dash sixty-one, nineteen dash eighty-three, nineteen dash ninety-five, nineteen dash one-twenty-two, twenty dash seventy-nine, and twenty-two dash one sixty-four by amending sections nine and twelve thereof to change the use and allotia funds previously appropriated therein for capital and human resources development and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuer.
Thank you, Speaker. I move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, C.B. Number twenty-three dash one fifty-six. Discussion? Any discussion?[1796.87]
Question.
Question.
If none, no objection. Debate is closed. We will vote on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-six by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-six. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one fifty-three for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty-one dash one eighty as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash one ninety-one, twenty-one dash two thirty-four, twenty-one dash two forty, twenty-two dash twenty-one, twenty-two dash one thirty-one, and twenty-two dash one forty-six by amending section six thereof to extend the lapse state of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Ponpe, and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three on second and final reading. Discussion? Chairman Asher?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also offer the floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three. Copy, reading copy has been distributed to members and it's lengthy. Therefore, I seek to dispense the reading of the floor amendment, so move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three offered by Chairman Asher be adopted. Discussion?
Question.
If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three offered by Chairman Asher. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have CD one. Any further discussion on the said bill?
Question.
If none and no objection, we will vote. All those in, uh... We will vote by roll call of delegations. So, Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three, CD one. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one fifty-four for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-four is a bill for not to further amend public law number seventeen dash thirty-six as amended by public laws numbers seventeen dash forty-eight, seventeen dash seventy-eight, seventeen dash eighty-seven, eighteen dash thirty-six, eighteen dash sixty, eighteen dash sixty-five, eighteen dash eighty-four, nineteen dash twenty-two, nineteen dash one oh nine, twenty dash dash seventeen, twenty-one dash eighteen, twenty-one dash one two four, twenty-one dash one six one, twenty-two dash one twenty-six, and twenty-two dash one sixty-five by amending section six thereof to extend the lapse state of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs in each of the states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-four. Discussion? Chairman Asher?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is my last floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-three. The reading copy has been distributed to members. Because of its length, I would request that we dispense the reading of the floor amendment, so move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-four offered by Chairman Asher be adopted. Discussion on the offered floor amendment?
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian?
I move to nominate Senator Asher as the new amendment king.
Any further discussion? If none, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-four offered by Chairman Asher. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have CD one. Any further discussion on the said bill? If no further discussion and no objection, we will vote by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-four, CD one. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one fifty-five for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty-two dash one eighty as amended by public laws numbers twenty-two dash one eighty-seven, twenty-two dash one eighty-eight, twenty-three dash oh three, twenty-three dash oh nine, twenty-three dash eleven, and twenty-three dash thirty-six by amending sections three, five, and six thereof for the purpose of changing the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Kosai and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five. Discussion? Chairman Asher? Or, uh...
Second.
Madame Chair Abellio Alfonso.
Speaker, yes. Thank you, Speaker. I'd like to offer a floor amendment to CB twenty-three dash one fifty-five, copies of which were provided, I believe, yesterday. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five offered by Madame Chair Abellio Alfonso be adopted, and because of its length, we'll dispense with its reading. Discussion on the offered floor amendment?
Speaker.
Chairman Rusma.
May I know why the good Madame Lady Chair person is offering amendment on Kosai's project?
Short recess. We're still on discussion on the, uh... Offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five offered by Madame Chair Abellio Alfonso. Discussion? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment offered by Madame Chair Abellio Alfonso. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have CD one. Any further discussion on CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five?
Point of privilege.
State your point.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh... I will cut, I will not get any credit in terms of the next election on this point of privilege, but on behalf of our good Chairman Christian and Madame Chair, uh... Abellio Alfonso, I'd like to, for the Congress to welcome and recognize, um... One of the councilmen of colonial town government, actually the vice speaker, Mr. Cassidy Schenber. Let's all give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, our citizens are always welcome to observe the Congress, uh... While we're in session. So, any further discussion on CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five, CD one? If none and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-five, CD one. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one fifty-seven for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-seven is a bill for not to further amend section nine of public law number twenty-one dash forty-two as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash fifty-five, twenty-one dash seventy-seven, twenty-one dash one sixteen, twenty-one dash one forty-seven, twenty-one dash one seventy-one, twenty-one dash one eighty-three, twenty-two dash one fifty-six, twenty-two dash two oh three, twenty-three dash oh seven, and twenty-three dash fifty-six to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the fiscal year ending September thirty at twenty twenty to provide a breakdown of the funds appropriated for the purchase of the embassy buildings in Tokyo and Washington, D.C., and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-seven. Discussion? If no further discussion, no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-seven. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Short recess, Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one fifty-eight for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-eight is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty-two dash eighty-six as amended by public laws numbers twenty-two dash one oh one, twenty-two dash one oh two, twenty-two dash one oh six, twenty-two dash one forty, twenty-two dash one forty-seven, twenty-two dash one sixty-one, twenty-two dash one sixty-eight, twenty-two dash one eighty-five, and twenty-two dash one ninety-seven, twenty-three dash oh six, twenty-three dash twelve, twenty-three dash fifty, and twenty-three dash sixty-four by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Kosai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-eight. Discussion? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-eight. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one fifty-nine for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-nine is a bill for not to amend public law number twenty-two dash one eighty-six as amended by public laws numbers twenty-two dash one eighty-nine, twenty-three dash oh one, twenty-three dash fourteen, and twenty-three dash one forty-seven by amending sections three, five, and six thereof to change the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Ponpe and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-nine on second and final reading.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. With permission of Chairman Asher, I'd like to offer a floor amendment to Congress Bill twenty-three one fifty-nine, and likewise, the amendments have been reduced to writing, printed, and duplicated, distributed to the members, and I... Move that the amendment be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-nine offered by Chairman Christian be adopted. Please note, because of its length, we will dispense with its reading. Discussion?
Permission granted.
Question.
If no objection and no further discussion on the offered floor amendment, debate is closed. We will vote on the offered floor amendment to CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-one offered by Chairman Christian. One five nine.
One five nine.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. We now have CD one. Further discussion?
Question.
Vice Chairman Marar. Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-nine, CD one. Any further discussion?
Mr. Speaker, may I just point of clarification?
Say your point.
Does that mean my floor amendment is also accommodated by Senator Christian's?
That is the understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Any further discussion on the said bill, CD one? If no objection, no further discussion. Debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Kalangan.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one fifty-nine, CD one. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one sixty for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one sixty is a bill for not to further amend public law number twenty-two dash thirty-seven as amended by public laws numbers twenty-two dash forty-five, twenty-two dash seventy-six, twenty-two dash one seventy-eight, twenty-three dash sixteen, and twenty-three dash twenty-six by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Kosai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one sixty. Discussion? If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Kolland.
Yes.
For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Kosai, Madame Chair Segura. For the state of Ponpe, Chairman Figueroa. Uh, I'm sorry, for the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading CB number twenty-three dash one sixty. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill number twenty-three dash one sixty-one for second and final reading. CB number twenty-three dash one sixty-one is a bill for not to further amend public law number two, twenty-one dash two two eight as amended by public laws numbers twenty-one dash two forty-eight, twenty-two dash twelve, twenty-two dash twenty-two, twenty-two dash thirty-six, twenty-two dash seventy-four, twenty-two dash ninety, twenty-three dash eighteen, twenty-three dash twenty-five, and twenty-three dash forty-eight by amending section three thereof to change the use of funds appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Kosai State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading?
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-161. Discussion. Any further discussion? If none, no further discussion and no objection. Debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Colin.
Yes.
For the state of Pompe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Sigra. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-161. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Bill Number 23-152 for second and final reading. CB number 23-152 is a bill for an act to further amend Sections 9 of Public Law Number 22-153, as amended by Public Law's numbers 22-169, 23-08, 23-13, and 23-54, in order to further repurpose $1,500,000 from a previous appropriation for the purchase of property for the FSM consulate in Honolulu into supporting the newly acquired FSM embassy property in Washington DC, in addition to the $1,500,000 previous repurposing authorized by Public Law Number 23-54 and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. We move for the passage of the said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-152. Any further discussion?
Question.
If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegation. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Colin.
Yes.
For the state of Pompe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Sigra. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-152. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the bill calendar is Congressional Bill Number 23-163 for second and final reading. CB number 23-163 is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of $105,348 from the General Fund of the Federated States of Magonisha for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, for the purpose of funding the settlement of FSM Supreme Court Civil Action Number 2023-018 and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. We move for the passage of that said bill on second and final reading.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-163. Discussion.
Question.
If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said bill on second and final reading by roll call of delegations. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the state of Chuk, Chairman Colin.
Yes.
For the state of Pompe, Chairman Christian. For the state of Koshai, Madam Chair Sigra. For the state of Yap, Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill under second and final reading.
With that, Congress has passed on second and final reading, CB number 23-163. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I have the following bills that I wish to withdraw from the relevant committee and place on the bill calendar for action. Congress Bill Number 23-165, Congress Bill Number 23-166, and Congress Bill Number 23-107, and, but not the least, Congress Bill Number 23-103. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress withdraw and place CB number 23-165, 23-166, 23-107, and 23-103. Discussion by floor leader. Motion for... It's been moved and seconded that the rules be suspended on the placement of the said bills. Discussion on that motion. If none, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We're now on discussion on the placement of the said bills. Any objection? If none, debate is closed. We will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We have now placed on today's calendar for action, CB number 23-165, 23-166, 23-107, and 23-103.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
I move that all bills on the today calendar be deferred to tomorrow.
Any second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the... All the bills be deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Discussion. Any objection? If none, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred its action on CB number 23-165, 23-166, 23-107, 23-103 to tomorrow's calendar for action. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
I have a... Are we on resolution calendar?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a resolution that I wish to withdraw from your committee on ways and means and place on the resolution calendar for action. And that is Congress Resolution Number 23-172.
Is that a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's resolution calendar for action, CR Number 23-172. Discussion. If no further discussion and no objection, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now placed on today's resolution calendar for action, CR Number 23-172. And this will be right after the currently placed resolution, which is CR Number 23-160.
Speaker. I'd like to place a resolution on the calendar. I move to withdraw and place Congress Resolution 23-173 on the resolution calendar for action today.
Can you please repeat the number?
CR 23-173.
173?
Yes, Speaker. I so move.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's calendar for action, CR Number 23-173. Discussion. If no objection and no further discussion... Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of the placement of CR Number 23-173. If no further discussion, debate is closed. We will vote on said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We're... CR Number 23-173 has also been placed on today's resolution calendar for action. So, Chief Clerk, next resolution.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Numea.
I'd like to withdraw and place on today's resolution calendar CR Number 23-178. And so I move for...
Can you repeat the number?
And I move for adoption of that.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded that Congress place CR Number 23-178 on today's calendar for action. Discussion on the placement. Please note that the rules are still suspended. If no further discussion and no objection, we will vote on said motion. All those in favor of placement of CR Number 23-178, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now placed on today's resolution calendar for action, CR Number 23-178.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Christian.
I also would like to venture a motion that Congress consider placing the following resolutions on the resolution calendar for action, not necessarily today. 23-168, 169, 170, and 171. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place on today's calendar for action, CR Number 23-168, 169, 170, 171. Discussion on the placement of those resolutions. If no further discussion and no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said motion. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now placed on today's calendar for action, CR Number 23-168, 169, 170, 171.
Short recess, please.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on the resolution calendar, so... Chief Clerk, first resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number 23-160 for adoption. CR Number 23-160 is a resolution to ratify the amended treaty among the governments of the Republic of the Marshall Islands, the Federated States of Magonisha, and the Republic of Palau regarding the College of Magonisha amended land ground treaty to extend its terms up to September 30th, 2033.
Chairman Christian.
I so move, Mr. Speaker.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number 23-160. Discussion. If no objection, debate is closed. And this is a treaty, so we will... We will vote by roll call of members. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator Abella Alfonso.
Amen.
Senator Arretoz. Senator Asher.
Out.
Senator Christian.
Amen.
Senator Figueroa. Senator Colin. Senator Conman. Floor Leader Lawrence. Senator Marar. Senator Numea. Vice Speaker Romelo. Senator Sigra. Senator Rosamal.
Dlish.
Speaker Moses.
Amen.
Mr. Speaker, we have 11 affirmative votes to the said bill, to the said resolution.
With that, Congress has adopted CR Number 23-160. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chief Clerk, next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We're now on Congressional Resolution Number 23-172 for adoption. CR Number 23-172 is a resolution authorizing the President to submit the recommended national government compact budget request for fiscal year 2025 as revised pursuant to Congress's recommendations to the United States of America under Article 5 of the 2023 Fiscal Procedures Agreement.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress adopts Congress Resolution Number 23-172.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number 23-172. Discussion.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa, you have the floor.
I have a... An oral amendment that I wish to make to the title of the... The resolution. To delete the phrase "Congress recommendations" and insert the word "law" in lieu thereof. I so move. National law.
Can you repeat it so that the Chief Clerk? Oh, short recess. Congress is back in session. We're still on discussion of the motion by... The oral amendment offered to CR Number 173, offered by Chairman Figueroa. Any discussion on the said motion? If no objection and no further discussion, question has been called for. We will vote on the offered oral amendment to CR 23-172, offered by Chairman Figueroa. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We now have CD 1. Any further discussion on the said resolution?
Speaker. I asked that...
Chairman...
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I asked when the resolution is in gross, that the staff is... You authorize the staff to do the cleanup in the language in the body of the resolution, grammar and spelling.
Thank you.
And move for the previous question.
If no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor of adoption of CR Number 23-172, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR Number 23-172. Short recess. Congress is back in session. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number 23-173 for adoption. CR Number 23-173 is a resolution extending the March 11, 2024 emergency declaration of the President that was previously extended to May 30th, 2024 to August 31st, 2024.
Madam Chair, Abelia Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to adopt CR Number 23-173. So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR Number 23-173. Discussion.
Question. Question.
Chairman Christian.
Has anything changed since our last discussion that involved whether or not the states have reinstated their emergency declarations?
Madam Chair, Abelia Alfonso, would you like to...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I believe there hasn't been any changes since we discussed this resolution. The points raised remain as is, but the emergency declaration issued prior to this ends tomorrow. So, we need to make a decision on this, whether we like it or not. Whether it's for or against, I think this resolution needs to be acted upon. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Rosamal.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Has the situation changed since the last extension of this declaration? A question is, do we still have problem with rain? And the problem is because there is no rain, or it's too much rain?
Too much rain.
Madam Chair, Abelia Alfonso.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I... I believe we may be having rain on the main islands, but the outer islands are still struggling with the effects of the drought. And part of the... Hope here is that the accessibility to funds that they have been granted has not been accomplished within the timeframe that have been given. And this would provide them the leeway and the margin of time to be able to access funds that they've already developed projects for, to make them more resilient to the effects of climate change. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker.
Chairman Figueroa.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. I rise in support of the extension because as the Madam Chair mentioned, there are projects and especially that are still ongoing. And if we were to not have this emergency declaration, those projects would come to a halt. And part of the difficulties in implementing the projects were... First, some of the grants that were given to us by... first, some of the grants that were given to us by international agencies is still coming. And, and also internally, we have transportation problems to the outer islands to build, uh, the things that would then, uh, take care of the next drought. Climate change is gonna be happening every year and every day. And we need to be prepared for the, those future events. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Speaker, and I thank the good Chairman of Ways and Means for his comments. Uh, I just wonder if there is ever gonna be a time when this nation, our four states, will be prepared adequately to take care of, uh, climate change, uh, impacts. I recall the good Chairman kept talking about money that was awarded to Yap uh, in the neighborhood of over eight hundred thousand dollars. And the idea from the Yap delegation was to help Yap prepare for these kind of emergencies. Unfortunately, the tanks that were purchased, I, uh, heard and I saw were septic tanks. And they collapsed after a few years of, uh, uh, standing up. And some were built in such a way that the, uh, where they catch the water from buildings were lower than the top of the tanks. So I hope if this effort here is successful that our states will be implementing project that would address the needs of the population as far as climate change. I know that, uh, some of the islands are also flooded with rainwater. And, uh, for those that have not received rain, uh, I guess we should address them, but the issue that I had raised with, uh, administration about whether we can continue to use money that is earmarked for this emergency declaration when they are not extending their declaration is okay, and I was told by some lawyers that it was not. It would be illegal or not in accordance with our laws. Uh, but if that's not the case, then, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the said resolution? If none?
Chairman, uh, Speaker.
Chairman Colin.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I, uh, I agree with, uh, the good Chairman on E in regards to this emergency. Yesterday, we discussed about the, all the states. Because the state has not been extended their emergency, and yet we just go ahead and then wanted to extend this one. And it's, for me, I just kind of confusing the way that we, uh, treat this emergency.
Speaker. Up to yesterday, we talked about putting the, uh, cart in front of the horse. Right now, what we're talking about is riding the horse backward facing the tail. Horse is moving forward and we're looking, uh, at the tail of the horse. But I, I think this, this is, uh, an issue that should warrant serious get-together between the President and the governors of the states. We may, we may be yelling into a canyon, uh, as it is now. Maybe they don't need the help. And if they don't need the help and there is foreign money, what better way than to call that country and says, "Look, thank you very much for your support. Here's your money back. The problem has been rectified."
Speaker, move for the previous question.
If no objection and no further discussion, question has been called for. We will vote on the said resolution. CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-three. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-three has been adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one seventy-eight for adoption. CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-eight is a resolution authorizing the President to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Kristover I Christian to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Federated States of Micronesia Petroleum Corporation, representing the private sector.
Chairman Numea.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move for the adoption of CR twenty-three dash one seventy-eight.
It's been moved and seconded that CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-eight be adopted by Congress. Discussion? If no objection, question has been called for. We will vote on said resolution. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-eight has been adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Currently under the resolution calendar is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one sixty-eight for adoption. CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-eight is a resolution authorizing the President to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Hendrick if, if allowed to serve as the FSM Council General in Guam.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-eight. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, no objection. Debate is closed. We will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor of the adoption of CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-eight say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-eight has been adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one sixty-nine for adoption. CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-nine is a resolution authorizing the President to resubmit the nomination of Ms. Majalin Marie Kim to serve as the Deputy Chief of Mission at the FSM Embassy in Tokyo, Japan.
Chairman Christian.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the, that Congress adopt CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-nine. Discussion?
Question.
If no objection, no further discussion. Debate is closed. We will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor of the adoption of CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-nine? Say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-three dash one sixty-nine. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now have Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one seventy for adoption. CR number twenty-three dash one seventy is a resolution authorizing the President to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Inosanti I Onasum to serve as the FSM Council General in Honolulu, Hawaii.
Chairman Christian. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-three dash one seventy. Discussion?
Question.
If no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the said resolution. All those in favor of adoption of CR number twenty-three dash one seventy say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-three dash one seventy. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Under the resolution calendar now is Congressional Resolution Number Twenty-three dash one seventy-one for adoption. CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-one is a resolution authorizing the President to resubmit the nomination of Mr. Rollinson P. Net to serve as the FSM Council General in Portland, Oregon.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-one. Discussion? If no further discussion, no objection, debate is closed. We will vote on the adoption of the said resolution. All those in favor of the adoption of CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-one say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted CR number twenty-three dash one seventy-one. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
None, Mr. Speaker.
If no further resolution. Chairman Christian.
I move that we recess until tomorrow at ten.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at ten. Any objections? If none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until ten AM tomorrow.